Okay, having a quorum, I'll open the February 18th meeting of the City of Santa Barbara Planning Commission. First item, Mr. Rodriguez, will you please call and roll?
Absolutely. Mr. George?
Here.
Mr. Justice?
Here.
Mr. Jacob? Out. Mr. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Lodge?
Here.
Mr. Larson?
Here.
Chair Bartlet?
Here. Under preliminary matters, Mr. Cotto, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
There are not.
And announcements and appeals?
I just want to say that there was some talk of switching the order of the agenda items, and we're not going to do that, so I do ask that we keep the first one short. We're going to have a quorum problem starting around 2:30 and definitely at 3:00.
Great, thank you. At this point, I'll open public comment for any item not on today's agenda. If anyone would like to come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. We'll go straight to our first discussion item, which is Item 3A, which is the Public Works Streets Capital Improvement Program for the fiscal year 2011. Mr. Wozniak will make the presentation. If we could try and limit that to about 15 minutes if you can, so we have enough time for comments and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Chair Bartlet and Planning Commission members. My name is John Wozniak, Principal Civil Engineer for the Public Works Department. I'm the Streets Capital Program Manager, and I'm here today. I've been before the Planning Commission on an annual basis to give you an update on the Streets Capital Program budget for this year, fiscal year 11. And I previously distributed to the Planning Commission a memo and some materials, and I have extra copies in case you would like to have another copy, or if the public would like to have a copy there at the front table here. I'd like to start out that in accordance with our circulation element, staff holds public work sessions with the Planning Commission and the Transportation and Circulation Committee to review and discuss project priorities for the Streets Capital Program. And today's staff is requesting the PC to review staff's report and comment on the program prioritization criteria and the proposed Streets Capital Improvement Project fiscal year 11 budget. I do want to remind you that this is a snapshot in time, and this is our first draft of the preliminary budget, and it's quite a dynamic and fluid time now with revenue projections, et cetera, the state of the situation with the state, the economy, et cetera. And so I expect that there will be modifications to this proposed budget, and that we would be providing you with an update to those modifications likely in a month to six weeks' time. And a similar presentation of this will be made to the Transportation and Circulation Committee meeting on Thursday, February 25th. I'd like to give an outline of what I'll be talking about today, which is this introduction, the program funding sources, the program funding priority categories, and project priorities for funding, our draft-proposed fiscal year 11 Streets budget, and next steps in the process. Our work session purpose is to obtain the Planning Commission and public review and comment on the draft budget. And again, in accordance with the circulation element, and this is quote right out of it, prior to each annual adoption of the Capital Improvement Program, public work sessions shall be held with the Planning Commission and the City Council to develop project priorities for funding. And that's the reason we're here today. In the memo that I distributed to you dated February 8th, I mentioned that every two years the city typically prepares a two-year budget and a six-year capital improvement plan report, referred to as the six-year capital report. We did that last year, and because of the economic situation and our city budget situation, we're actually doing that again. So it's not every two years that we do it. This year, we're doing it again due to the budget situations. And so I have some exhibits, and I'll get into them in a little more detail, that I've attached to that memo, but I wanted to let you know that this is a snapshot in time, and that our project, our proposed budget will go through the conventional budget process, including the Finance Committee review, and ultimately will be approved by City Council. Again, this is a one-year budget and a one-year snapshot of the six-year capital improvement report. And the capital improvement report is a report of the needs, and I had that as an attachment to your, the memo that I sent to you, and identifies the funding needs for the capital The funding sources, Measure A was passed in November 2008 by a large margin in the county. It's a 30-year measure, and it assures a significant revenue stream to the city and the Streets Capital Program. And the current Measure D that is in existence expires, and it ends beginning, end of March. Measure A commences April of 2010. So the funding that we're receiving from Measure A has dropped primarily due to the drop in sales tax revenues. There's been a significant drop in spending due to the economy and other factors, and so we were anticipating to receive less revenue than we have historically. Another issue is that with the new Measure A, the MTD portion that they receive is actually coming off the top in Measure A, as opposed to in the past years where city would actually use city contributions to contribute to, or cities' allocations to contribute to MTD contributions. And so that was a change in the different, one of the differences in the Measure D versus Measure A. Another factor here is with our utility users' tax. That has, the revenues from the utility users' taxes also declined. Again, the economy is a primary factor, and spending is another factor in that. So our revenues from the utility users' tax are projected to be approximately $1.9 million for our Streets Capital Improvement Program. And going back to Measure A, our projected revenues for the Streets Capital Program for this program is approximately $550,000. Between Measure A and the UUT, utility users' tax, it's a decline of about $1 million from last year, so it's a significant amount. This year's budget is approximately $2.5 million. Last year, we were, I was here with you to explain that we had a decline to $3.5 million. So again, we're continuing on the downward side of revenues, and our current and latest estimates are reflective of the decline in those revenues. The good news is, is that our most significant funding source is our grant funds. There are federal and state grant funds. Typically, they are project-specific. An example of that are our Highway Bridge Program grants, where millions of dollars have been allocated to replace our deteriorating city bridges. And there are other grants that, I'll list them for you in a minute, but I want to let you know that the revenues from grant funds for fiscal year 11 are approximately $5 million. So that's a significant amount of revenue source for us, for our capital program. So here are the bridge, I'm sorry, the grant funds listed. Again, I mentioned the Highway Bridge Program, that's project-specific. We apply for grants for bridges replacement as they are deteriorating, and also in concert with the Lower Mission Creek Army Corps Improvement Project that is ongoing, to gain more capacity in Lower Mission Creek for the flows from the rains. Another grant revenue source is Proposition 42, and that is a gas tax-related grant fund, and it has specific limitations on its use. It can only be used for pavement and road repair, maintenance and repair, or storm damage repair. So those are the exclusive uses of Proposition 42, and that total is approximately estimated to be $750,000 for fiscal year 11 that the city will receive. And we have received those types of amounts in past years. The glitch here is that with the state situation, that could potentially change. They may be wanting to either withhold or delay city accepting those types of funds. So there's more details to come from the state as their budget issues develop. Another grant that we receive typically every year is the Local Surface Transportation Program Grant of $347,000, and that's allocated by formula, by population throughout the county and the state. And historically, we've used that for pavement maintenance or drainage improvements or repairs. A new grant that we've just recently received, and kudos to Drew Van Hinkle, who's just walked in, our Transportation Operations Supervisor and staff, for receiving a $400,000 Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant for the Carrillo-Anacapul intersection improvement project. So that will be a significant help in funding improvement of that intersection, that is one of the highest collision intersections in the city. Another grant that we have secured is the Safe Routes to School $805,000 grant for the Jake Boisel Multipurpose Pathway Project that is west of Sabrina 154 and along and adjacent to Kai Rail. And that project is in design. Also, the two other grant funds that we have in fiscal year 11 are the Transportation Development Act and Bicycle Transportation Account. We typically get approximately $60,000 for bicycle improvement, used for bicycle improvements with the TDA grant, and then the BTA grant. We're planning to have some matching funds for a potential grant for similar improvements. One of the highlights and focuses of today's meeting is the project priorities for funding. And so I'd like to just briefly tell you of how we arrive at some of the budget recommendations that we make. We have determined that projects that have significant consequences, if not constructed, are high priority. So for example, if a bridge is deteriorating and it needs to be replaced, choices are budget and fund it to replace it, or to close the traffic down and avoid or limit the use on it. Other projects of that nature are like our pavement management. If it's a pay now or pay more later situation with pavement management where the deterioration and pavement does not stop, it only continues with time, and timely preventative maintenance is the key solution to limiting the amount or maximizing the amount of expenditures to get the biggest bang for the buck. And generally, maintaining existing infrastructure before funding new improvements is a program priority, so we want to maintain our existing infrastructure prior to adding to it. Another goal is to have city policy improvement projects are also important, and we have sidewalk infill program, we have bicycle improvements, we have safety improvements that are very important to us, that we would want to continue funding, even if the amount is a limited amount of funding. Another one is a high priority maximize leveraging of funds through grants. As I explained, grant funding is one of our, is our primary source of funding for the Streets Capital Program, and so for us to maximize grant fund leveraging is optimum. An example is for highway bridge program projects, the grant funding is 88.53%, where the city only has to contribute 11.47% match. So it's 11 cents basically on the dollar for those multimillion-dollar projects, so that's great leveraging. And a new priority that we inserted this year, and it's all, it's been inherent in our program all along, is really the safety projects. And we've, I've created a separate category this year for that to highlight and address the focus that we have for safety in our, in our public right-of-way. There are significant consequences if we don't spend the money on our capital program in the right locations. Again, I mentioned that there's pavement maintenance. Another one is traffic signal maintenance. We do have to ensure that our traffic signal operations are functioning properly and safely, and that we can make timely improvements. Sidewalk maintenance, as you may well know, being a Tree City USA, we have a certain amount of trees that we love and want to maintain as best we can, but they do have an interaction with our sidewalk, and we do have to maintain our sidewalks for, to prevent against trip and fall, and to keep them in accordance with regulations. Also, we are aggressively pursuing access ramps to help the disabled in accordance with our ADA requirements, Americans with Disabilities Act. We have a focus on working with the neighborhood, including the Access Advisory Committee and the Neighborhood Task Group, and having access corridors or ramps included and inserted at access corridors that are priority through the city. Things we also consider are just the linear consequences of not doing work. For example, if it can be delayed, it just instantly costs more or less later. In this bidding climate, sometimes a delay can result in it costing less. We've had sidewalk projects where a couple of years ago, we have had higher bids than we received today. So, but those are more or less considered linear consequences. Some of our drainage maintenance is more or less linear consequence. We can plan to budget for them, and some of our operational expenses are also somewhat linear. Sidewalk infill is one of the projects that we would like to include if we can afford it.
John, you've already used about 12 minutes, so if I could-
Okay, I'll move it along, thank you.
Get to the important part here.
Thank you. I'll move on to, again, the grant fund leveraging, safety projects. I think everyone recognizes the need for safety in the right-of-way. Yeah, I'd like to focus then on the, one of the line items for the budget. And again, please know that this is a snapshot in time, and that our focus is maintaining the infrastructure. I have two slides. This first slide gives you a list of projects that we have proposed for funding that fit into those categories that I have just described. And so you can see that the amounts in each of those line items are significant, are relatively low as compared to numbers that we have used in the past. With the exception of pavement maintenance, our pavement needs are approximately $4 million a year to keep our pavement in the condition that we would like to, which we have a pavement condition index target goal. We typically budget with city funds approximately $2 million a year. And I mentioned that we've got grant funds as well, so the grant funds help make up the shortfall, and we typically try and get a million to $2 million of city funds. These funds that I'm showing here on this table are city-designated use funds. So they, we can use them, we have some discretion and variability for what's their use, and so we've tried to apply our criteria to these projects, and they include existing projects and primarily maintenance projects in this category. You can see the total here is $1.95 million, and it represents 80% of our Streets Capital budget. The remaining 20% are in infrastructure improvements. Again, I mentioned that infill, side access ramps, and some of our intersection and Mission Creek projects have limited funding designated to them to keep those projects alive and going, so that we can seek additional grant funds, and that we can continue to work on, and chip away on those projects to keep them alive and active. Safety upgrades include a pedestrian refuge island program. That's a new program that we believe is important to keep safety in the right-of-way. Traffic signal operational upgrades. Anything that we can do to upgrade and improve intersections can reduce collisions and can make them more safe for interactions with vehicles and pedestrians and other modes of transportation. And that we would like to spend some funds to do more education to the public. And so that's a new line item this year that we would like to include. And that, again, the last item, trying to set aside some funds so we can seek additional grant funds. Now, this, the safety upgrades totals $275,000. The infrastructure improvements totals $225,000, and then the grand total being $2.5 million of city funds that can be used for improvements, that are designated to be used for improvements in the public right-of-way. So our next steps are to receive the Planning Commission, the Transportation and Circulation Committee, and public input, and then we will assess the issues and the revenue sources, and then we would forward our updated budget. We can do that by a memo to you, or I can make another presentation if you'd like. I have one tentative scheduled for near the end of March, so I'd like to hear comment back on that. And then we would forward our updated and latest draft budget to the city administrator. That would occur at the end of March-ish, and then it would move on through the Finance Committee for their review, and ultimately to the City Council for their review and approval. So be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, John. Are there any questions from the commission? Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'm sorry, I just have a comment, but it's kind of like a question.
Well, I'd like to maybe just open public comment real quick, and then we can roll in the comments.
Sorry, let me come back then.
Okay. Actually, John, I do have a couple of questions while we're in the question portion, and it was on your attachments on page five, which was part of the six-year look-ahead. And there were a couple of categories on there that I didn't quite understand, maybe you can clear me in. One was the fourth item down on the list, which was the intersection improvements at State and Delavina, and for this year, 2010 through 11, which I'm assuming goes through June of this year, there's like $276,000. Was that just for the redoing of the crosswalks and the painting that occurred at that State-Delavina intersection?
Good afternoon, Chair Bartlet. I'm Drew Van Hinkle, the Transportation Operations Supervisor. We have a budgeted amount for a capital improvement project at that location. You may recall that it's been through preliminary design, and we've been asked by council to revisit the design and come back at a future time. So the costs associated with the striping are actually separate. They were undertaken with the Streets Slurry Program, and the money that's showing here in the budget now is previously allocated dollars for a capital improvement project at that location.
Okay. And then one other item, even though it doesn't show up in 2011, it's about two-thirds of the way down the page, is the traffic signal maintenance, it's converting optocont detection to GPS. Can you briefly explain what that is?
Sure, I'd love to. That project is a project that was, is a higher-cost project that we've revisited now with SB-CAG. That project is intended to provide communication between the traffic signals and the transit service on the corridor, so in other words, having a way for the buses to tell the traffic signal, "We're coming. If you're green, stay green for a little while longer."
Okay.
We're still moving forward with a similar project, but we're working on using a lower-cost technology.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Any other questions? Ms. Lodge?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just quickly, if you could tell me about, rather significant sum, $400,000 for Carrillo-Anacapul, it's one of the highest accident rate intersections in the city. What's planned for that intersection?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lodge, what's planned for the intersection are some, to make these traffic signals more visible in the intersection, and to provide pedestrian embellishments so that there is some delineations between the traffic and the pedestrians, and some geometric modifications that could enhance the intersection to promote safety. So that's primarily it. It's a, it's an upgrade of the intersection primarily.
Great, thank you. Well, if there's no more questions, I'd like to open public comment. There's a lot of public, but I do think most of them are here for the next item, but I wanted to at least give them a chance. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment and come back to comments from the Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It may be more appropriate for TCC when you get there at the end of the month, but given the economic climate, whether it's sales tax or TOT funds, whatever, the news just seems worse every day. Since you asked me, it'd be interesting to me to see on this list, the colored slide list and the several categories of funds you're going to spend, what your priorities are. So what you're, what you're going to accomplish from dollar one through what you're going to accomplish through $2.45 million in order of priority or in classes of priority, just to kind of see what that is up front and kind of have a sense on what you think is more important and what you think is least important.
Great, thank you. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would underline Mr. Jordan's comments, it would be good to see some kind of a ranking system, because we are short on funds. Now, to the core question of whether, how the commission weighs in on these priorities and the selection criteria, normally, I would say priority number three, city policy improvement projects, would be a high priority because of my background in the circulation element and what have you, but I think in these severe times, that's got to drop down to five. Just my two cents worth.
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Justice, for clarification, although they're numbered one through five, doesn't necessarily mean that they are ranked one through five. They're, in my mind, all very high priority items.
Thank you. I have a different perspective on that. I think we do need to rank them. I think we have to know what, I mean, the only way you can make a sound decision that balances both needs and availability of resources is to have a very clear priority system that differentiates between high priority projects and medium priority projects, and if everything's high, it's not a criteria. It's a guessing list. And so I think before you get to the Finance Committee, there needs to be a ranking of which is most important, and I think the safety issues obviously come very high, if not the highest on that. The liability issues come very high as well, and the opportunity issues in terms of leveraging funds beyond the city's capabilities is also extremely high, and I think the others would kind of fall in at a lower category. In that regard, the Cliff Drive-Los Pecitas intersection improvements, while they're a good idea and we need to, you know, at some point make progress on a roundabout, I think that falls off the list when push comes to shove, because I don't see it meeting those highest priorities. The other thing, and I'm normally a strong pedestrian master plan advocate, but again, in these times, I think we have to take a real hard look and say, if we only got $10 in the bank account, that's all we can spend, and that has to go to the highest priority projects. And I see some room to move on the pavement maintenance portion of the maintain existing infrastructures portion of the table, and other than that, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. Others? Ms. Lodge?
Something else I wanted to bring up. Staff mentioned that sometimes there's an advantage to delay, in particular in this economic climate, bids are coming in lower. However, delay, when you're talking about pavement, pavement maintenance works the other way, doesn't it? If there's a delay, there's more work that has to be done. So I think when you're balancing, you have a tough time. All I'm trying to say is, I understand you have a tough time balancing the priorities to see, you know, what is most important at this time with what you have.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Chair Bartlet. I am concerned about our deteriorating infrastructure in some key areas around the city, which I think underscores a comment by Commissioner Justice, which goes to safety and liability. And I think deferred maintenance should be avoided for all the reasons you've already stated and that we've commented on. So if there's a way to align our budget, because we need to live within our budget or seek additional leveraged funds, I think we have to look at where our needs are most pressing with respect to those priorities. And while there are many projects within the city boundaries that are worthy of attention and undertaking, such as the Los Pecitas-Cliff Drive intersection and improvements there, that to me also does not seem to be as pressing as some of these other projects that are already on your roster, and I think hopefully you'll be coming back to us later next month with more detail when we have more time. But I'm mindful today of our time constraints, so, Mr. Chair, I'll leave it at that for now.
Great, thank you very much. Well, I think the others have pretty much encapsulated most of the comments. I agree, I think you really need to separate the wants from the needs. We really need to focus on the needs right now. We don't need to let our infrastructure deteriorate further. If we have some left over, let's put it to the wish list items, but we all know that probably before the end of the year, the 2.5 million might not even be 2.5, so I think you need to categorize it such that we have a menu and a choice, and it's already predetermined, so we don't have to have meeting after meeting every time there's a change in the budget. So I think this is a good start. I'm glad you came in for our preliminary input, because I know you're still working on it, and you need to talk to the other groups as well. So I hope that gives you something to work with, and I think it's certainly a good start, and it's a lot less than we're used to seeing, and it probably might even go down from here. But is there anything else that you need from us, comment-wise, or?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate all the comments and recognizing there's limited time. I just wanted to clarify too, that we have had prioritization sessions with the planning, prior planning commissions and prior transportation circulations committees, and we have had, we have a good sense of the previous rankings, and of course, there are some new and additional and changed projects, but we have certainly considered all of that. And again, with a project like the Cliff Drive and Los Pecitas intersection, the reason that's there is that we have only got grant funding for construction only, and so in order to, again, leverage that grant funding, we need to budget for the design cost, and that's the reason- leverage that grant funding, we need to budget for the design cost, and that's the reason that that line ended. But that's just an example of the thought process that we use. So, we've carefully considered many of these, but we certainly appreciate your comments, and we'll give this all further consideration and give you an update when we have that information available.
And you said you're scheduled maybe for late March to come back to us?
March 18th.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will go on to our next item, which is Item 3B. I will be recusing myself from this item, since this is my particular project, so I will let Vice Chair Justice take over.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. This next project is a substantial conformance determination, as requested by the agent, for 803 North Milpus. Mr. Cotto, I believe Mr. Lawson is going to be providing the staff report on this matter?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. The project is located at 803 North Milpus. And the request is for substantial conformity to eliminate a curb extension approved as part of a mixed-use development at the corner of Milpus and De La Guera. And in addition, offer a contribution, the applicant will be offering a contribution of $6,300 to the city's access ramp program. Project may found at the corner of Milpus and De La Guera. And the development that was approved on November 5th included a 19,000 square-foot commercial building, mixed-use building, predominantly residential, at three stories and 40 feet in height. They tow three buildings, one along De La Guera and two along Milpus. And this is a quick shot of the elevations of the development, looking along De La Guera and looking along Milpus. Access would be provided off of De La Guera Street. So, the reason why we're here today and the basis for the substantial conformity is the project will include demolition of the sidewalk. Currently, those four driveways accessing the site, they'll all be removed. New sidewalk put in, access from De La Guera. Typically, with sidewalk development, you have basic city standards you have to meet. But in addition, there's other improvements under pedestrian master plan that can rely, such as the curb extension. So, the applicant had that included in the proposal. It was approved on November 5th, and it was appealed. And the main issue around the appeal was the curb extension and the appellant not supporting that. The applicant discussed the appeal issue with the appellant, and the compromise arrived at was to remove that curb extension and thus the substantial conformity request. The curb extension improvements and sidewalk dimensions, we get a lot of that direction from pedestrian master plan. And the policy 1.3 is, you can find strategy 1.31. And I won't read all the paragraphs, but essentially, it talks a little bit about the Milpus Street Corridor and the fact that the sidewalks are fairly narrow. So, as part of the project, the applicant provide a little bit more area on their property, and the city provided two extra feet in the right of way for a little bit wider sidewalk, frontage, and planting area. The other item was the curb extension. And under this paragraph, talks a little bit about the fact that other pedestrian needs, you know, should be provided by the developer. That could be, you know, a little bit higher visibility in crosswalks, as well as curb extensions. So, this policy really drives some of these improvements. So, proposed change would be right here along the corner of Milpus and De La Guera, and those curb extensions is what was approved in November. And this is what it would look like as proposed by the applicant. And bear in mind that the sidewalk at 15 feet will remain. That was an improvement included in the project, and a 12-foot wide sidewalk along De La Guera. These are both consistent with the recommendations in the pedestrian master plan. And finally, there is going to be improved dual-directional ramp at the corner, which will be improvement of what we have today. And this is a shot of what the corner looks like today. And roughly between these arrows is where this proposed curb extension would be located. So, that I'll wrap up. And the next steps would be receive feedback on this proposed change. The director will consider all comments from the planning commission, the public, and the staff, and then determine if the project substantially conforms. With me today is Steve Foley and Justice Swanson with Transportation Planning. And there were a few comments emailed into us, which I believe have been distributed to you. So, with that, I turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Would the applicant like to make a brief presentation to the Commission? Given the limited nature of this consideration today, if you could be focused and crisp, it would be great.
My main goal is to try to keep this focused. Can I?
Now, we switch over.
Yeah, I'm plugged in here. Yeah, this, I'm hooked up to your projector. There we go. That's you. That's me.
I'm Jared Goran of Vanguard Planning. I represent 803 North Milpus Street LLC, and they're the project applicant on this. What's going on here? The project that we have here, it's a mixed-use project. It was approved back on November 5th. This is the site plan that was approved back on that date. And we're here talking about a change to the corner treatment on that project that we need comments for substantial conformity on. And I've noticed there's been a lot of correspondence that's come in on this hearing. I've had the ability to read almost every piece of correspondence that's come in. And real quick, I want to clear one thing up. A lot of this correspondence takes the tenor of, you know, "Good for you, city, for forcing this developer to do a curb extension in this project," and that is completely inaccurate. The curb extension was something we proposed originally as part of the project. It was never conditioned or required on the project. They were proposed by the applicant, and it came about in this way as early as the pre-application on this project. Staff made this suggestion, and they simply said, "Please explore the potential for a curb extension." They wanted us to look into it, and we did, and, you know, we thought it was a good idea, and we decided to go ahead and include one in the project. Another thing I would add is that the curb extensions at the corner of Milpus and De La Guera, they were never a significant topic of discussion at either of the two planning commission hearings on this project, either on August 20th or November 5th. We had that weird one on August 20th that wasn't at the corner. That was a topic of discussion. But no, 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 no public comment. We never even had public comment at either of those hearings, and no real commissioner comment was ever focused on this curb extension on the corner. So, the project was approved unanimously on November 5th, and then it was appealed. November 16th, the last day of the appeal period, that letter came in from Rick Feldman. The main point of this appeal had to do with the bowl bouts. And, you know, his point that he's bringing up here, those of you that were here at November 5th, remember Bendy did make this comment that, you know, when he was walking precincts, he did hear a lot of negative feedback about curb extensions. And it's become pretty evident that there really isn't a consensus in the community about these curb extensions. But that's, that's really an issue for the community. That's really beyond the scope of our project here. We tried to resolve the appeal. I work with Peter, and I wanted to see, you know, if we could take these things out and avoid having to go through a whole city council hearing on this, if the appellant were willing to drop their appeal, you know, could staff avoid us having to go through an extended review process? And Peter and transportation staff worked really hard on that, and they came up with a good solution. The appeal was going to go before the city council on January 26th. We worked with staff to see if we could remove this curb extension without having to totally redo the review, if, in fact, that would end up resolving the appeal. Staff told us that we could do that with the substantial conformity determination process. That's what we're here for today. They assured us they would expedite it, and I would have to say they have certainly done that. They've moved very fast and we're really happy that they did that for us. We then went and met with the appellant, Mr. Feldman, on January 14th, and we told him what we'd come up with and that, you know, we would consider removing this curb extension. He agreed that the curb extension was his main reason for filing the appeal. He agreed to put the appeal on hold to allow us a chance to process removing this curb extension. And then he also agreed that he would withdraw that appeal if we were able to just remove the curb extension from the project. He followed through. He wrote a letter in putting the appeal on hold on the 18th. And then we, on the 26th, submitted the substantial conformity request. So, this, I think some people are confused about what this hearing is today, not necessarily staff or your commission, but I think a lot of public comment from what I read. Some people seem to think that this hearing is a de facto referendum on the pedestrian master plan. Some people think that it's a debate over whether curb extensions are good or bad. It certainly is not that. I've heard very intelligent people who I respect a whole lot tell me that they believe that somehow if a curb extension isn't in our project, the entire pedestrian master plan no longer applies in the city of Santa Barbara. And I think that that's, honestly, I think that's a little absurd. It's certainly an extreme position, and I don't think staff agrees with that, or we'd have a big, bold-faced paragraph in the staff report to that effect, which we don't have. The only thing we're here to talk about is, does this revised project substantially conform with the project that was approved on November 5th? So, let's just go through that. This is the project that was approved on November 5th. This is the revised project. In terms of building setbacks, there they are with the approved project. Here they are with the revised project, exactly the same. The driveway location, that's the approved project. Revised project, identical. The interior open space that we had, that's the approved project. This is the revised project. It is identical. And finally, and probably most importantly, the sidewalk improvements. This was the main topic of discussion at both of our hearings. And the sidewalk improvements, Peter pointed out, 15 feet on Milpus and 12 feet on De La Guera. Here they are with the approved project. Here they are with the revised project. They are identical. They are substantial sidewalk improvements. We are still doing this full 15-foot section. This is what it looks like in the project. We need it to a T. Basically, everything in this project is identical to the project that was approved on November 5th, with the exception of how we're treating this corner. So, we're talking about curb extensions and the pedestrian master plan. Let's take a look at what the pedestrian master plan says about these. It doesn't establish absolute requirements for curb extensions in this project, or in any project for that matter. The best way I have of illustrating this is in how staff talks to us about various elements of the pedestrian master plan. I couldn't think of a better way than this. So, here they are talking about curb extensions. Again, this is the PRT letter, and staff says, "Please explore the potential for a curb extension." Then later on in the process, in our DART review, we got to talking about the sidewalk widths and the minimum widths that it talks about in the pedestrian master plan. And in that case, staff says, "It indicates four-foot parkways, six-foot sidewalk, 1.6 frontage zone should be implemented for new projects. And this is much firmer direction. This is something which every project has to have." We didn't agree at that time, but we agree now. Staff was very firm about this. And this is a very different character than when they're talking about something like a curb extension, which is much more of a guideline, or it's not required with every project. And again, this is the standard staff was talking about there, and it actually, this is the 60-foot standard they were talking about. We ended up doing the 80-foot standard. Staff cites Page 62, the pedestrian master plan about the Milpus Corridor. Peter put that up there. Here's Page 62. This is the paragraph. And the main thrust of this paragraph is talking about inadequate sidewalks on Milpus, and they're eight feet, and a lot of times they're narrowed down to four feet. And it says, "The main issue is they're consistent and they're not wide enough," and that's the main issue. And then it also talks about crossings, and it says, "High-visibility crosswalks and curb extensions are some options." But what you do not see here is, you do not see anywhere in this any policy or development standard or requirement for curb extensions at every intersection in Milpus. The entire Milpus discussion falls under Policy 1.3. It's just a broad policy. It says, "The city shall enhance pedestrian corridors." Here it is. This is notable. It does talk about, you know, it's preferable to do these on a corridor basis instead of piecemeal with individual projects. I thought that was interesting. Then let's take a look at the Milpus Corridor North map. It doesn't require a curb extension at the corner of Milpus and De La Guera. It identifies it as a potential improvement. That's the legend. We'll make that visible here. This is interesting. It says, "May include." I mean, that's the, it doesn't even say "should include," and it certainly doesn't say "must include." And here's curb extensions, but that's one of eight options here that it discusses for this intersection. That's our intersection right there. Something else on this that's, we notice is, you know, this identifies intersections which were the problem intersections within this area. And you'll notice, this, the intersection adjacent to our project is not identified as one of these problem intersections. When you get down into the design guide, it talks about attributes of good street corners. It doesn't even mention curb extensions. It mentions general attributes that can be accomplished in a variety of ways. This is Page 222 out of the design guide. Those are the attributes. These all make great sense, you know, clear space, visibility, legibility, accessibility, and separation from traffic, okay? These are general attributes, and then the design guide provides a number of ways to attain these. Are we saying that curb extensions are the only way to attain these five attributes? From a lot of the correspondence I read, it would seem that that was the case. I mean, obviously, that isn't the case. Finally, the pedestrian design guide, it doesn't require curb extensions. It lists them as one potential option out of 14 options for corner improvements. It has this thing called the crosswalk toolbox. This is about eight pages worth of the design guide. This is Page 2 or 3. Here's where it talks about curb extensions. You know, but what's this right underneath it? Curb ramps. It says that they're appropriate at every intersection where there's a crosswalk, whether or not it's an indicated crosswalk. It refers back to those attributes that we just looked at. And then, you know, does this picture look familiar? It should. That's the PMP example, and this is our revised project. And you could literally take our project and use it as the diagram in the pedestrian master plan itself.
Mr. Goran, you have 10 minutes.
I'm wrapping up right now. The revised project fully implements the pedestrian master plan. The originally approved project also fully implemented the pedestrian master plan. We're not having a referendum on the pedestrian master plan or curb outs, or curb extensions today. We're asking for comments on whether our revised project substantially conforms to the original project. And I think it's very clear that it does, and I will reserve any other time to respond to public comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Goran. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Questions for staff? Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Vice Chair Justice. I'm not sure if this is the time to pose questions to staff that I had from reading some of the letters submitted to us by the public. some of the letters submitted to us by the public, so perhaps you could make a recommendation as to whether or not we might wait till after public comment, a further public comment other than the written and then...
I, I would suggest we wait in case the public who does address us today answers those questions.
Very good, that's fine.
So with that, seeing no other, Ms. Lodge or Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll hustle along here. A question for staff, I, when you read through the staff report, as part of the process, the original approval was for the extensions and those are part of the pedestrian master plan and then you come to the conclusion that you can end up with access ramps and those are also part of, and I think your phrase in here is actually at the end is that the, the newly, the revisions to the project, the remaining sidewalk improvements would be consistent with the pedestrian master plan. My question is, is which is more consistent or which is more preferable from a, a city process? It seems like you've, you've already gone through a process where you've indicated that one was more preferable, as it was suggested and pushed forward and now that an alternative has been provided, you simply said that the other, that the alternative is now also consistent.
Commissioner Jordan, my name's Steve Foley, I'm the supervising transportation planner. They're both, as the applicant said, they are both consistent with best and master plan. When the staff is reviewing the project, and we viewed this project, the, one of the tools we're looking at is the crosswalk toolbox and we recognize that the curb extension is probably the highest quality improvement as far as making improvement for the pedestrian However, if it were not there, or, or I guess the curb ramps themselves being there, they are a part of that toolbox that are suggested and do meet the goals, I would say probably maybe not as highly, a higher quality of an improvement as the curb ramp self, or the extension.
Thank you. And then, the intersection, the entire intersection is ramped already, are those ramps not in, not in accordance with today's ADA requirements?
I'm not sure if they're in accordance with the, the ADA requirements, but the dual access ramps are the preferred...
You better help me with that.
It's, there'll be two ramps, I'll pull it up there, that will direct...
Okay, either direction.
In either direction.
Rather than the one ramp in the middle.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
One question from Mr. Cato. When we originally heard this, did the app, did the appellant either address the commission or submit written comments?
Neither.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'm going to open up the public for comments on this project. Mr. Goren, I'm gonna ask you to sit in the audience as opposed to the staff table, just for protocol purposes. Our first speaker is Mr. Rick Feldman. We're gonna allocate two minutes each for folks to address the commission.
This will be just about two minutes and members of the commission, I'm pleased that I have this opportunity to speak with you about this project. I'm the appellant because I felt that the notice given to the community, the Milpus corridor is such an important entryway to this, to the city and has been the subject of numerous contentious debates over rotaries and roundabouts and, and we're currently in the process of suffering through the improvements on the 101 and the impact that that has on, on Milpus Street. So today, I want to report to you that I'm here to affirm that the recommendation of the city staff, I've been in contact with the project manager, Jared Goren, and the reason that I filed the appeal was, we had not been notified, there is no more Milpus Association as such, so I'm representing a loose association of merchants and other people along the Milpus corridor, all the way down to and including the rotary. And as you're probably aware, the appeal objected to four points, the, the lack of notice, the proposed bulbout, the parking plan, and then confusion over whether the sidewalk plan resulted in a narrowing of Milpus Street. And as a merchant situated on Milpus Street, my main concern has always been for public safety, easing traffic congestion and access to businesses in the Milpus corridor. I discussed all these, these issues with numerous fellow residents of Milpus Street and we were agreed that the most problematic issue was the proposed bulbout. What I've learned, and I've learned a lot about bulbouts in the last month or two, is that this is a very contentious issue and there is no clear consensus anywhere as to whether bulbouts are good or bad and, in fact, in past cases where bulbouts were proposed or not proposed, the, they were decided on a one-by-each basis and I think, especially in the case of Milpus Street, we have to take it that Milpus is a, a unique situation relative to many others in the city. In this case, we were able to work with the developer and he was able to work with city planning to eliminate this feature and thereby satisfy the main point that I expressed in the appeal. I was therefore ready to go to city council to express my acquiescence to the project without the bulbout and subsequently I was informed of the need for the developer to appear here today to demonstrate substantial conformity with city planning requirements. I'm here to say that while I still have concerns for all of the issues raised in the appeal, that we're willing to allow the project to proceed without further objection. So I thank you for giving me this opportunity and I'm willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Feldman, I have a question for you. How are your interests as a, as a business owner on one south Milpus impacted by a bulbout over eight blocks away?
That's subjective. I'm, I'm interested in anything that impacts on traffic flow on Milpus Street and many of the fellow appellants, if you want to call them that, this loose association I referred to, ranging all the way from myself up to Steve Handelman, who was across from, virtually across from the proposed site and, and a number of others that I could mention, all feel the same way as that the, there is no more Milpus Association, but there is a loose association of, of people that live and work on Milpus Street who all feel that Milpus Street being the unique corridor that it is and having a traffic flow at the, where I am, of up to 34,000 cars a day and as I understand it, as it narrows down, and that's unfortunate, narrows down at the appellant, at the site of the proposed project, I understand the traffic count there is 16,000. So, yes, it's a subjective question and I'll answer it in a subjective manner, which is that I'm interested in anything that happens on Milpus Street.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Westby.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners, my name is Jim Westby and I'm here to support the removal of the bulbouts from the 803 Milpus project. Bulbouts are experimental and there hasn't been any data that says they are the right approach for us in Santa Barbara. Now I have enclosed, I hope you have a copy of this, some pictures of bulbouts that were installed on Garden Street. As you can see, they're pretty beat up from vehicles hitting them, running over them, et cetera. After they were installed, and this was part of the whole St. Francis Traffic Calming Project, the city council said, "We're not gonna install any more of these until we get experience and data on what they really do to our infrastructure." Well, that's not what's been happening, we've been installing these things all over the city. Who's to say, when you look at those pictures, that they are safer? They may be less safe, 'cause you're putting the pedestrian closer to traffic. Now what can we say about bulbouts? Well, first you can say that any bulbout on a corner will eliminate the right-hand turn lane, allowing for traffic backups and increased vehicle emissions. A good example of this is the intersection of Good Terrace and Chapala. After the bulbouts were installed, we're now experiencing large backups, in fact, I've seen it all the way back to State Street on Good, Good at Terrace at peak periods. When Chapala 1 is open and operating, I predict we will remove these bulbouts.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, bound there on the intersection, we are restricting the movement of large vehicles such as buses, semi, semis, fire trucks, trash trucks, et cetera, not something we should be doing. And also bulbouts prevent cyclists from getting over to the side of the road at the intersection, forcing them into the flow of traffic. I've heard many complaints from cyclists. You heard about campaigning from Bendy White, I was also out campaigning and I heard a lot of comments from citizens that don't like these devices. We should not install any more bulbouts while, without thoroughly understanding the effect they are having on our traffic system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lodge.
What is before us, I believe, is a finding of substantial conformance and I don't think we're here to talk about the pros and cons of extensions, are we?
Uh, no, the, the matter is...
Does this project still...
To the existing project.
Conform to what was approved.
Hey, that's, that's, that's great, but I was getting this, all this feedback that everybody was gonna come here and talk about bulbouts.
Thank you. Mr. Pritchett? And as I am reminded by Mrs. Lodge, please keep your comments to the issue of substantial conformity.
Thank you, I'm David Pritchett, currently the chair of the City Transportation and Circulation Committee. The, we all know, this is a, this was brought up as a referendum on curb extensions or bulbouts as a design feature, that's why this is under appeal and we all know that. This question should come to the transportation committee and not go through this very bizarre mechanism of a substantial conformance decision by the community development director. What precedent do we have for our very minor projects that were only approved a couple months earlier to be through a conformance determination? This is not Levy Town or the Ritz-Carlton Hotel 10 years later. This, contrary to what the representative of the applicant said, this curb extension was approved as a permit condition last November, it's part of the project and now, out of fear of delay, this appeal came up to take away the curb extension and the applicant just wants to make this move as forward, as fast as possible and that's why you got this great little analysis about why the pedestrian master plan doesn't really require anything. Well, you know, it requires as much as detail as it can not to put every intersection in the city plan. So, you know, we have technical issues and policy issues. Technically, this doesn't slow down traffic, it improves conditions for pedestrians, it gets the pedestrian out of the street quicker so traffic can move faster, that's a technical issue that's totally wrong in the appellant's letter. For example, and as a policy question, you know...
10 seconds, Mr. Pritchett.
Yes, I hope you can recommend to the community development director not to unravel perfectly good and tight projects with conformance determinations, because what's next could be street lighting, landscaping, or other things where someone just decides two months later, they don't want to do it anymore. These could come up time and again.
Mr. Furtig?
Acting Chairman Justice and members of the commission, I'm, I'm Ralph Furtig, I'm president of Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition, but I'm speaking as a resident of, longtime resident of Santa Barbara who bicycles, walks and drives all around. The whole issue of conformance or not, I'm not sure that it matters that much, what was interesting is that bulbouts are considered a much better solution for pedestrian safety than just the curb ramps at the intersections and we know there are a lot of reasons why they are better, they shorten the distance for pedestrians, they increase visibility of pedestrian by motorists and vice versa, they alert motorists to an upcoming crosswalk, they slow motorists, both those going through and turning, they keep cars from parking too close to intersections and they reduce the paved area, allowing for landscaping. There are traffic studies contrary to suggestions otherwise and I have some that are from 2003 from a transportation person in Canada and he looks at a number of studies done around the world.
Mr. Furtig, do you have an opinion on the matter before us, which is a decision of, of substantial conformity?
My opinion is that statistics show that it's much better to have the bulbouts than the, just the curb ramps at the intersections, that for bicyclists and for everybody, they are better and I recommend them for everybody.
Hey, thank you very much.
Sorry, I can't say more.
Courtney Dietz?
My name is Courtney Dietz, I'm the project director for Santa Barbara Walks, which is a project of the Coalition for Sustainable Transportation and I would like to start by saying that I do believe that this change significantly changes the project because of a number of facts that Ralph pointed out, that curb extensions have proven success in increasing the safety for pedestrians, they don't impede bicyclists like we've heard from other people and I think it affects drivers when I'm driving myself, because it does get pedestrians out of the crosswalk faster, so technically speaking, I can get through the intersection when I'm driving faster. I think this is an important decision, I, I agree with the appellant, or sorry, the applicant, that we shouldn't be having this discussion here, but the fact of the matter is, we are and the curb extensions are a very big part of this project and I really do think that that needs to move forward. I'd like to remind the commissioners that this is right near Santa Barbara Junior High School and the high school, which also means that that's dealing with hundreds of students a day, I've been there at the lunchtime, I've counted them myself, it is literally 100 students using that in the midday, so that's an issue of safety, safety for our students as well as all the Milpus residents that were using that. I, I do want to remind you that the pedestrian master plan may not require curb extensions at this location, but it identifies the corridor as a high priority because of the, because of the use of pedestrians and because of the impacts of, of previous accidents in that area and so I don't think that we can just look at this as, as just a minor change to the project, I think it's an important part, we need to conclude it and I encourage you to consider that. I'd like to point out, in case you haven't gotten a chance to read them, that I myself have been noticed of several letters of support from people from the state PTA, the principal at Santa Barbara High School, three reps from local businesses, one of which is at the corner of Cannon Perdito and Milpus, which just recently had those curb extensions added there in the last couple of years, concerned residents and four separate parents that are in the area, so I'd like to challenge Jim Westby that not all people and, and businesses as well in this area are against curb extensions.
Thank you, you're right on, spot on time. Mr. Mark Bradley, to be followed by our last speaker, Eva Inbar.
Hello, commissioners, my name is Mark Bradley, I would like to object to your process here of giving two people who oppose curb extensions their full time to give their opinions and then not allowing the same for other people, I don't think that's fair. Okay, I'm writing to request that curb extensions be maintained in the project at Milpus and De La Guera Streets. I have knowledge of this from a number of perspectives, I, I submitted a letter, which you should have. For the past six years, I've been a member of the City Transportation Circulation Committee whose task it is to ensure that city policy is consistent with the circulation element and the related pedestrian master plan. The pedestrian master plan specifically recommends curb extensions as a means of encouraging pedestrian trips and increasing safety. The committee members have been virtually unanimous in its support, in their support of curb extensions to improve pedestrian safety in specific neighborhoods. City staff at our meetings presented us with statistics from the St. Francis neighborhood that showed clearly that the introduction of curb extensions has helped to significantly reduce the number of vehicles traveling at unsafe speeds, over 35 miles per hour on those streets, so they have shown effectiveness. I've done a lot of research and read the numbers in the US and Europe, the average American pedestrian is 14 times as likely to be killed by cars as pedestrians in Europe or Dutch, in Holland or Germany and I don't think that's because planners in the US value people's lives less than planners in Europe, I just think a lot of cases, people aren't aware of how many lives could be saved. Controlled studies have shown that curb extensions significantly increase the likelihood that vehicles will yield to pedestrians who are attempting to cross a crosswalks. In summary, I'll encourage you to follow the guidance of the circulation element, the pedestrian master plan, many schools, parents and other city residents by making curb extensions a standard feature of intersection redevelopment. In this case of this project, they are already an approved component of the project, no coherent argument has been made for deleting them and many good reasons... coherent argument has been made for deleting them, and many good reasons for keeping them. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last, Ms. Inbar, to be followed by Alex Boujot.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, my name is Eva Inbar, I'm the President of Coast. I'm here to urge you to look at all those speakers' lips and all the letters that you got, and that will tell you that this is not an incidental feature. Those curb extensions are important, no matter what argument you try to make, this is essential to the public, and it's an essential safety feature that should be maintained. Pedestrian accidents happen when pedestrians try to cross the street. Anything we can do to make pedestrian crossings shorter and make them safer, we should do, especially when you have two of the largest schools, the two largest schools in the city of Santa Barbara on one side, you have a major corridor, like was pointed out before, with high traffic volumes, and then you have a residential neighborhood on the other side. You have to bring all those students across Milpus to go to school. That's not a luxury for them, that is not green, it's they have to, if they walk by necessity. So we have a responsibility to make this as safe for them as we possibly can. So I submit that this is possibly the most important safety feature that there is in this project that we're getting here for free. Who would turn such a thing down? I cannot imagine that anyone would want to do that and possibly face someone whose kid is hit then and tell them, I was the one who voted that this wasn't important, that this conforms, and that those curb extensions shouldn't be there, and they're not important. I want to remind you of Maria Rodriguez, who was killed, in fact, trying to cross Milpus. I want to remind you also of another girl who crossed another high-volume street here nine years ago at a signalized intersection like this one, was hit nine years ago, is in a coma still. She's 19 now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Inbar. Mr. Boujot?
Good afternoon. I would like you to send your voice to counsel where all this is headed with a very strong and passionate call. This is a frivolous appeal. It has nothing to do with the project, this is a wonderful project, only a few of you have seen it, but I've been a subject of a frivolous appeal as well, and I know how it feels, like, you know, you do everything, you try to please everything, and then a voice comes out of nowhere, maybe eight blocks away, and it tries to make a point about this or that, or what, that there was no notice, and there was some kind of association that doesn't exist, that doesn't get, who knows? The issue is that inside the property lines, within the property lines, this project is exactly the same, but as improvements in the right of way are not. That is not substantial, substantial conformity. And I also, I think that Mr. Pritchett has a point. Can you use this process to nickel and dime, approve process this way? Minor features, a light fixture, a crosswalk. Also, there's a comment about the pedestrian master plan about walking along Milpus Street. Well, yeah, that's only part of it. Crossing the street is also a big part of the pedestrian master plan, not just walking along it. I have nothing else to say, thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to close the public portion and bring the matter back to the Commission. Mr. Cato, if you could remind us of the decision we're making in terms of the, the boundaries of our substantial conformity feedback, this is a recommendation--
Correct.
--to the Community Development Director.
When projects get approved, oftentimes, they will come back afterwards because of some engineering thing, right, that makes it so they can't build the project that was presented to the Commission. And in that case, we do, we have a process called the substantial conformity determination. That determination is made by the Community Development Director, and we ask for input from the Planning Commission in some cases. There's actually four different levels of substantial conformity. Level one is, we just do it, and we put a memo to the file. Number two is, we do it and we inform the Commission through a memo. Level three is something that we do, we get comments from the Commission in a lunch meeting. And then level four, the highest, for those most controversial, like this one, have a public hearing. So what we're asking the Commission to do is to give input as to whether the project is substantially in conformist to that, which was approved on November 5th, I think. And then we will take all these comments into consideration, and the Community Development Director will make a determination. That determination is not appealable. So, so that's it, we're looking for your recommendations and your comments on whether the proposal, exactly the same within the property lines with the change from the, the widened sidewalks, at least the widened sidewalk on Milpus Street, the 15 feet, the 12-foot sidewalk on De La Guerra Street, the dual, the dual ramps, and also a contribution of $6,300 to the, what's it called, the Cities Access Ramp Program, which is the equivalent, that's the cost, that's the additional cost of the bulbout versus all the rest of the improvements that are proposed. So is that substantially in conformity with the approval? That's what we're asking for your comments on.
Thank you very much. Who would like to start us out? Don't all speak at once. Mr. Jordan.
Okay, I'll be the whipping boy first. I'm trying really hard not to fall into the trap that everybody else has fallen into, so I'll just admit right away, I'm not going to, before I actually just give my definition of conformity. I am sympathetic to both sides and certainly view extensions or bulbous on a example-by-exemple basis. Mr. Westby's example of Lower Chapala is in the block I work, and I see people running over that curb, I've seen buses hitting the street, the streetlight, and I know that's an example of one that may not be as good. Conversely, I see others on Chapala that I appreciate when I'm trying to get across them, and I, so I think it's an example-by-example basis. I distinctly remember sitting at home watching the State and De La Vina conversation, and that would have been an easier sell for me, other than Milpus, because I don't think you can make the same consideration or the same argument in terms of safety, given those two. One of the challenges up at State and De La Vina was to show accident reports or injuries that happened at an intersection, and there wasn't really much to show. I know that Milpus is inherently a dangerous street from traffic accidents and injuries, and that more should be done there to resolve that, and then we fall into the chasm of, is this the correct way to do that? So I'm a little, in terms of conformity, in my opinion of conformity, I'm a little annoyed at the slides I saw that showed the red and the green lines, red and the blue lines, on here was our project before, here's our project now. My experience is when staff suggests something to you in the pre-planning process, when you know you need discretionary approvals, is that those discretionary approvals are going to be easier to get if you bundle community benefits with your project and get through that process. So I don't really believe that showing the red lines and the blue lines are equivalent, because the process you went through when you received your discretionary approvals included the curb extensions. And those were deemed in total at that time to be a community benefit, rolled into the package, and a decision was made on it at that time. I wasn't here at that time, but I think that, I think today's action to say that this does substantially conform does not honor that process, that if I had your preference, you'd go back to that process, take the, take what you want to do now, and go back and talk about your discretionary approvals again. So in my opinion, this would, this is not going to meet a conformity approval in my, in my, in my head. Thanks.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, on the other hand, can find substantial conformity here. The project is the same, the applicant did bring it to us with the bulbous, the extensions, but the, this treatment of the corner is also an acceptable one. And so I would, if it were up to me, I would find substantial conformity.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Vice Chair of Justice. I have a question for Ms. Connect. Could you assist us in some legal counsel as to how we might consider, how we might frame substantial conformity with respect to this project and the issues before us?
That's a good question, Commissioner Schwartz, and I don't think that there's a definition in the code as to what kind of criteria you would look at as to whether or not something substantially conforms or not. Staff has, has decided that this is a significant enough issue to bring it before your Commission for input and to have a public hearing. So, you know, I think that that action alone tells you that, that they are viewing this as a, as an important substantial conformist determination, for which they need, the Planning Director needs input. But I don't think that there's a scale, you know, that you can say, does this fit, does this not fit? It's really a discretionary-type determination. So, so I can't help you much there. But what I can say is, you know, the appeal that was brought itself is not relevant to this discussion. What is relevant to this discussion is whether or not the change proposed by the applicant, and I think Commissioner Jordan was correct when he said that, that these curb extensions were part of the original package that was approved. They weren't a condition of approval because they were part of the package. So, so you want to look at that, and then you want to look at, you know, does this then change the project so significantly that, no, it doesn't conform to what was originally
I think at this point, I am prepared to make some comments if we're still moving in that direction.
We are definitely moving in that direction.
I would be inclined in general to defer to my colleagues who were then on the Commission and voted unanimously to support the project as it was currently designed and defined. When I look at the considerations before us as to whether or not the, a revised project conforms, theoretically, one could possibly make a case for conformity, however, here's some factors that for me are significant. This is not just any project in any location in any part of the city of Santa Barbara, it's in a critical location where there is high pedestrian traffic. I myself attended Santa Barbara Junior High and High School, and I've known for many years the high traffic, the high pedestrian traffic in that area, and it continues today, and I'm in that area a lot for both personal and business reasons. I believe for a long time that pedestrian safety improvements were needed in this area, and I believe that this project brings some of those improvements to the neighborhood, to the Milpus corridor, in fact. We're not here today to debate, as Vice Chair of Justice has said, the pros and cons of curb extensions or bulbous. That's for another day and another time, perhaps, and I think that's a worthy dialogue among many of us in the city. I think they work some, in some areas for some needs, and in some other areas of the city, perhaps they're impediments and they're not right for those areas of the city. But in this area and for this project that was previously approved, and because we could find in either way in terms of conformity with the pedestrian master plan, I do not see how a removal of the curb extensions would comply. So I would find that we're not in substantial conformity with the original project approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. I think back to all the substantial conformity determinations that we've made since I've been sitting on this, on this Commission, and over the past six years, I think Mr. Cato is correct, all of them come to us because of specific changed physical conditions, financial conditions, or issues that are related to the design of the project we approved. You don't have substantial conformity decisions on zone changes and general plan amendments, you have them on a development plan approval. And in this particular case, the issue of safety and sidewalk with, with a specific community benefit, which was thoroughly discussed at the Commission meeting on this project, and formed the basis for at least some of us voting in favor of this project. That being said, the reason why we are here for a substantial conformity decision is not of a physical constraint, but of a political constraint, the political constraint being the appeal of this project. And the appeal was, in my opinion, a very frivolous appeal. And I don't think it did anybody any good by spending this much staff time, council time, and applicant time, and community time, talking about the removal of a piece of sidewalk, which is, which is critical to the functioning of this project as having community benefit. I think Ms. Inbar nailed it when she talked about the site-specific nature of the safety issues and its proximity to the high school, and that certainly was something that I took into consideration. And I've not always been a fan of wide sidewalks, I've learned from my mistakes. I learned from my, my good counsel of my wife who hates bulbous, and I think we've made some mistakes in the past as far as bulbous around town. But this is not a mistake, this is exactly what the Commission wanted, this is what the applicant did, and I think we start to set a very dangerous precedent when we start having a policy question that was already dealt with at a Commission meeting, raised by somebody who didn't attend the Commission reading or make comments contrary to that, so we didn't have a chance to talk about it then. Now we're talking about it with a project that has been changed, and changed for the worse. So from my standpoint, I don't think a substantial conformity decision can be made. I think if it goes to council on appeal, it goes to council on appeal. But the Commission had very good reasons for approving this project as proposed. Do you need further feedback from the Commissioner, or do other Commissioners have additional comments to make? Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Vice Chair of Justice. Your comments bring an additional thought to mind that I'd like to express, and that is, the key word is substantial. Substantial change. We continue to see on some projects requests for substantial changes, and when I look at this change relative to significant architectural change, significant real estate change, open space change, I think it doesn't meet that threshold. And quite frankly, when this came before us to prepare for the meeting, I was puzzled as to why this even came about. But nonetheless, we have a process, and, you know, it's appropriate that if somebody is concerned enough, they want to appeal, so here we are. But to me, this does not meet the threshold in any way, and I hope that that's helpful information for the Community Development Director. Thank you.
Mr. Cato?
Mr. Chair, I, we don't need any more input, I just want to say that it is very unfortunate that this whole issue is arising on the back of this project. I mean, this is a project that the Commission, that the Commission approved unanimously back in November. I mean, I think all seven of the Commissioners were here at that time and voted for it, and, well, I mean, I agree that it's, that it's a frivolous appeal, and, you know, at this point, most likely, I can't say for sure, but most likely, we wouldn't go against the Commission's recommendation on this, and its majority opinion to be not in substantial conformity, which means, you know, the appeal doesn't go away, and this project is held hostage for, for even longer. We're, we had scheduled a tentative meeting on council for March 23rd, in case this didn't happen, and, you know, so I, it is just an unfortunate situation all around.
I couldn't agree more. Would the applicant like to make a concluding remark?
Absolutely. And this may surprise you, but I disagree with you on only one thing, which is I think this hearing today has been extremely valuable. I want to clear up one thing for Commissioner Jordan, these curb extensions are not something we grudgingly went along with because we thought it would help us get approval, we thought they were a good idea, that's why we included them. We included them all the way through the project, and we saw this appeal, and we knew what this appeal was about, and, you know, Mr. Pritchett mentions that, oh, they're just trying to avoid a delay. We have much more than a delay at stake, we have a de novo hearing in front of the City Council, very likely, our entire project could get denied because we did the right thing and included a curb extension in it. extension in it. When we repealed, I didn't hear a peep from any of these fine people that showed up today to comment enthusiastically about it. So I certainly hope that if this does end up in front of the city council, I would hope they all participate again, because it will just as equally be at stake there. And in fact, that may be the de facto referendum on these that this certainly wasn't. So I really appreciate the strong and consistent comments that we're getting from the commission. I hope, I understand we have a commissioner that would go to this appeal hearing and represent the commission.
That's great.
And, you know, I fully expect us to be in front of city council on this, and, you know, it's inappropriate to be having a policy discussion that's a global city policy discussion in the context of our project. We got caught up in it. It's unfortunate. Obviously, there needs to be a debate about it, but, you know, this isn't the right way to have it, and I just hope that, you know, this applicant that has tried at every turn to do the right thing and implement policy and try to deal with the appellant, we're just trying to do the right thing here, and we just keep getting delayed and kicked down the road, and we need to get on with our lives. So I think this was valuable today. I hope the appellant and those who go along with them are paying close attention here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cato, do you need any additional feedback from the commission at this point in time? Okay. That concludes this portion of the planning commission meeting. The only issue that remains on our agenda is that administrative matters, and I would suggest that we defer that until the next meeting of the commission, because I know some commissioners have some time constraints here. So unless I hear protests from my colleagues, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.